Mitch.
Mitch.
I want to give you guys a minute.
Is it calling?
Yes, it is. And Mitch, here's your agenda. Does everybody have an agenda? Here, we have on two of us.
By the way, you're all being recorded, so keep careful.
It'll be nice.
Oh, look at that.
Don't say anything we're going to regret, huh? Okay.
Oh, you want to change in?
Yeah. I see. They're using this. Somebody. You need to prepare.
We're going to try.
Okay.
Source. Which one is that? Mitch, am I clear?
Hello.
Hello. Hi, Taylor, you made it.
Well.
So, Taylor, this is the committee. Colin is my other friend who is here, so... And here's an extra agenda. So, you can sit.
I think they're wearing their back.
They're back. I thought they were all back.
Nope. I shouldn't set the share.
The other team seemed to be a little concerned about that.
Two.
Whatever. Whenever anybody does times it's okay with me.
It's true.
Well, if I sit and don't, look at how I'm not yet out.
There you go. Here's a good sign.
Thank you.
Now, I'm trying to keep some distance. Now, I'm still recording. I don't think I'm saying like, you know, this is all just very rough. And rise gas. And of course, their food arm is Nicole here sitting here. And she's very interested in this concept. It takes very long.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, it takes a lot of time.
Sorry, things just don't work right. The fish are colored. But people start writing and it still isn't working. Then you're going, I've never had this problem before. I think it's Windows 10.
Oh, could be.
Oh, okay. How are you doing?
Good.
Thank you for hosting the layers getting together. That was really more nice. Hope you had more than that.
Oh, man, it was way bigger.
Yeah, well, my laptop is like four G. You recorded that one.
Yeah. I was like, I was like, oh, I was like, 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 I was
If you will, to make sure that we're sharing the story on Instagram and Snapchat, TikTok bids, and whatever we want to do to tell this story. Let's go TikTok. Why not? So what's in it for businesses? I think more business, more publicity, and a more devoted and loyal customer base. And I say that because again, if we can cement that relationship with people who are plugging their, we're plugging their heartstrings, and thus higher profits. What's in it for the city? I think the same, more business, more publicity. I think this is a saleable event in terms of, one thing that Explore Lincoln City likes to tout is unpaid news coverage, and this would be that. And I think it would resonate in a powerful way, and I think it can be picked up by certain alternative media and really work its way through the social media space in a way that could help us. I think that then leads to more transient room tax, which we're siphoning off just a small piece of, just temporarily. And most importantly, me, less plastic to bring around the beach, in the lake, and in the ocean. That is my six minutes. So that was the idea of, and it doesn't have to be my pictures, but it could be anything that takes that message, if the committee was into it. It seemed to me like one of the things we heard last month was the city sort of saying, hey, we'd like some feedback, and we'd like you to generate some ideas. And so that's just one, and it is but one, so.
I love it. That's kind of, when I joined the committee, that's what I was kind of hoping for too, is this exact idea.
Cool.
I think this is a great idea, and I think it wouldn't be that hard to implement or even that expensive. And I think it could make a very big difference, especially with drive-through coffee, with takeout food, with everything. So I think it would be something we could brag about.
I wonder if we should mention, if it would be worth mentioning, that plastic is like 80% of the debris problem, plastics and styropoles, and reducing plastic takeout containers and grocery hotel restaurant has been proven to reduce litter by up to 40% in various communities. And so I just wonder if that might be kind of a counterargument to some of the other arguments we've heard about, well, all you're doing is replacing one thing in a landfill with another thing in a landfill. And the fact is that it truly, I mean, you made a brief mention right at the very end, but the studies are out there, that it truly does reduce litter by a huge amount.
That's true. That's something I have encountered. And really, you make a really good point there, when you said, well, they all go in the landfill, so what's the difference? I truly believe this is a different conversation, it's a different committee, if all the things in our waste stream went to the landfill. But instead, they get thrown out of cars because people are schmucks, and they get dropped on the beach, and they get caught in the waterways, and they go down the street, and they wind up on the beach and in the water.
One of the more recent studies said that only like 10% is up in the landfill or something. It was staggering.
Really?
So, anyway, but I just wondered if it might make sense to add that to the
Sure, absolutely.
And if the committee decides that this is the first item that they would like to tackle, then perhaps part of the implementation plan would be doing research and gathering the statistics, the research, the data, and having the hard documents so that it can be compiled and presented as part of the committee's recommendation to city council.
Acceptable to recommend that we have an expert at the table when it's presented?
Like Bree?
Like Bree. Bree is what I'm thinking of, because when Rovere did the presentation on, I think it was plastic bags, Brianna and Tina sat side by side and were able to answer questions and had answers to each other. So yes, it was actually really good.
That was notably missing from that November 4.
Sure, no, I
Acceptable to do.
Okay. I would suggest that once the committee has their firm, what their first action item is going to be, then we develop a plan for how to implement that action item presented to council. And that would definitely involve bringing others to the next committee, to committee meeting, to discuss implementation and research and et cetera.
Well, Amberie, what about the, first let me preface this by saying, this is just one idea, and if the idea that the committee goes with is like a veggie fest or something like that, to be the first thing to present to the council, I'm totally fine with that. I had to get this off my chest. But that said, if we went with something like this or something different, are we really the source of the mechanical data, the boots-on-the-ground knowledge? Because at the end of the day, none of us in the room, I believe, have the practical work experience to necessarily be the experts to do that. We are, we are in a role of advice and consent kind of thing, and, well, advice, not consent actually, and advocacy. And so we're saying, here, but we don't employ the financial staff, the finance staff, to say, oh, this is probably how we handle this, it's similar to when we did this, or Ron Tierney had this idea. And so we would, I would think that if we got two in the weeds, we'd be at our death.
Well, and we're not
Because you're asking for detail and data, and here's how to do it, and here's the package, city, do this, where I think it's, I think by definition, it has to be more broad, right? Because, you know, Explore Lincoln City would have to be involved, finance would have to be involved, billing, you know, a number of different administration departments would be touched.
And that's part of what we would do, what the committee would do as a plan, is identify all the different stakeholders, who would have to be involved, what would their involvement be, what would, and outline that in a plan to then present to city council for, do you want to go forward with this? These are all the stakeholders that would be involved, these are the people that we need to contact, these are the businesses that we need to contact, these are the conversations that need to be had. We envision X number of community workshops, we envision meeting with, meeting with whomever. And that's what we would do, is we would identify those stakeholders, who we think are those stakeholders, and what those next steps would be, and prepare that overall general to get down to the details.
So when things like this are, like campaigns like this are rolled out, I've never been involved with anything like this, but what's, so with us kind of, we would be compiling some plans then, right? So basically
A plan to present to city council.
And then they run with it?
And then they would say, city council would say, you know, yay or nay, or we want to change this, yay, kind of yay.
Yeah, so it's probably going to be a kind of yay, right?
Yes.
And then do they kind of punt it back to us to go, here, we want you to work on these details, kind of thing, and so we kind of keep, it's kind of going back?
Yes, yes.
Because I'm such a do-it-yourselfer and trying, like, trying to think of all the things at once, and it can be overwhelming, and I think all of us are kind of like, yeah, so excited, but it can feel like that, where it feels like we have to try to do it all now. It sounds like they will be kind of, it's like an ongoing conversation.
Yes, exactly, it's an ongoing, and zero waste definitely is an ongoing conversation. And there are many components to it. And what Dave presented is one very minute component, and I'm sure Dawn, in the information that she'll give us, she has more ideas on definitions of zero waste, and so
And Katia had her hand up too.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to the conversation about what ends up in the dump and whether or not that matters. There are a lot of studies out now that there have been several mushrooms that have been discovered that actually eat plastic and spit out bio, biologically fresh substance that's actually edible, so a biomass. So mushrooms that grow in the dumps, underground, with no air, no light, no nothing, are eating the plastic in the dump. So I think it does matter what's going in the dump. So when the conversation at city council came in and they said, it doesn't matter what we throw in, if it's toxic or not, I absolutely disagree with that. If it's toxic, it's going to end up in the soil and become toxic soil. But if we're using mushrooms through something to help with the conversion back to biomass, then that's great, but we don't know how the mushrooms are going to respond to the toxicity of products. So I am much more interested in seeing bamboo containers coming in than styrofoam and these different things that we absolutely know have toxic issues. So that's all I wanted to add.
Yeah, I think, because I was looking, I was kind of looking into single-use plastics and stuff too for this week, and a lot of place, a lot of the word out there is, yeah, kind of like, well, why replace it with just something else that's single-use? But it does make a difference, where it, I would rather it be, you know, a piece of cardboard that sits there, because it's going to take some time to break down, but at least it's not styrofoam or plastic leaching toxins into the environment or ending up in the ocean.
Yeah.
Dave, I think it's a great idea. I find it very exciting. I thought, I think you did a great job on the presentation. I hope it's going to be very persuasive with city if we tailor it to them. So I, and another great advantage of, I think you really have conceived of a good way to get our toes stuck into the water, just as an initial, as an initial sort of a movement that can later on inspire us to just keep going. So I'm all in favor of it.
But, well, thanks for saying that. It could be one of those things that just, because of the need for public outreach and gathering together groups of restaurateurs and lodging folks, assuming we don't go the route of, I mean, the city council could conceivably say, nah, we're just going to go ban, and then you guys help us out on these areas, which is good and bad. And, you know, and that would be a different conversation though, with those groups, those stakeholder groups. But the, I want to touch on the point you made about the single-use plastics and the argument that, well, it's just, because that argument against those can get really interesting, like, well, the carbon footprint of a paper bag is, yep, exactly. If all we were talking about was carbon footprint, we'd have a different conversation. And like I said in this little note, if we were in weeds, California, nowhere near a body of water or a stream, suddenly we really have a different conversation. But we're the front lines of multiple waterways, and if that cardboard box that you're talking about gets out there, it's going to degrade a whale of a lot faster than a straw that goes in your nose, or plastic bags, or all these other things that we're talking about getting rid of. And I'm much happier when I'm doing a beach cleanup and I'm picking up cardboard instead of styrofoam.
Yeah, soggy cardboard.
It's easier on the soul.
Well, and I think too, when you think about lesser evils, it's kind of like, okay, well, yeah, a cardboard takeout thing is just a lesser evil, it's the single use, whatever. But it's easy. So it's an easy switch that can make a big difference. And people are lazy, whatever, and people want the easy way. So it is a lesser evil, and it still has its evils, but it's easy.
Well, and I agree with that, but I also, there are a lot of companies that are using bamboo containers. Bamboo is highly sustainable, and it gives the trees a break. You know, we're cutting down massive amounts of trees to make toilet paper and paper towels out. Out of, and there are all kinds of alternatives to even stop that behavior. I'm using bamboo toilet paper these days. And there are all kinds of other ways that we can expand the greenness of the city by stepping out of the plastic and the single-use paper, because there are alternatives for both of them right now, so.
Totally. I'm using a bamboo toothbrush, but I will say that Dawn hosted an event, the Autobahn Society hosted an event, they happened to rent the room from the college. And so I saw this, I stepped out of my office, and there's this buffet that I think it was Side Door, put it together.
Side Door Cafe.
Yeah, so they catered this event, and I went down, and it jumped out at me. The bowls of salad were like giant ceramic bowls, nothing plastic, no plastic lids. The utensils were all bamboo, the plates
Except that we also had stainless steel
You had stainless steel, right. Right, we were going to loan you some, because we actually bought a ton of cutlery to have, so we don't do plastic anymore in the office. And we just recently, just this week actually, we posted online that at the college, if you rent a room now, you, we don't allow you to bring in plastic water bottles, because we have that new water bottle filling station, so just use that. We'll give you a paper cup if you don't have a cup. But, so little tiny baby steps, like, again, talking about eating the elephant, but I think it's important that students like seeing it.
And those are, I think those are, it's important to follow up with what Dave said, is in that some of those baby steps, I think those are things that the committee can help identify and make a list of, and include as part of the overall plan of reducing the use of plastic or, or anything else, styrofoam.
And something else in the grocery stores, maybe you, I've actually seen a store here selling them, but they do inland, and I don't remember the company, but they're actual bags, I think they're made out of industrial hemp that you use for putting your produce in, and they're reusable. You could take the produce home, stick it in a deposit, rinse it out, put it in the refrigerator, they're fabulous. And a lot of the stores in the Portland area are selling them to people as alternatives to using the plastics, no-use plastic. So it's a really easy, you know, just buy these instead, and that's it, and then you're done. You just bring them with your reusable grocery bags and just put the produce in those. And so there are, there are a lot of small entrepreneurial companies that are coming out with these really fabulous fixes, uses instead. E-te's is one of them, E-dash-T-E-E, which are these cloth wax kind of things that you put your food in it and water it up and stick in the fridge. I use those for all kinds of
Speaking of that, I got, I got samples in the mail today from a company called Bees Wrap.
Oh.
So you know about them. I should have brought it, I got, I got the sample, I was beginning to bring it, but they're marketing that as an alternative to plastic wrap.
Somebody sells that at the Lincoln City Farmer's Market. Oh, okay.
What was that? And
Bees Wrap.
Oh, okay. Rachel Lamar, who works at TACs, I think she teaches fifth grade or fifth grade, she's following the steps of the surf rider movement in Newport, all the fifth graders that got the plastic bag ban through in Newport, which is just amazing, it's a bunch of fifth graders did it. Anyway, she's going to be having her class make a bunch of beeswax wraps to sell, I think, to sell. And so I told her that I would sell them at my place, but that it's going to be like, you know, all the kids are making them at her class or whatever, so, yeah.
So that's, we're on our way.
So where are we? Should we move to Dawn, or are there more discussion on the
Yeah, well, why don't we, why don't we move to Dawn, the research that everyone did, and then we can come back to what we want to focus on, because I think everything, the research in line with what Dave presented and the discussion we just had, will probably get us closer to a determination of what our first goal is going to be.
And I feel to put in the last minute, because I'd like to talk about water, you know, poison, toxic water.
Is that the under F?
That'd be under F.
Okay.
Yeah.
So everybody should have this in their packet already, right? It starts out, what is zero waste prepared by Dawn, if you don't, I brought them, I brought copies. Okay. And then I want one to hand out, that kind of goes with it. If I have an extra copy, is it okay to give it to those guys?
Oh, sure, it's a good thing, yeah.
Actually, I think you guys got packets, did you? Okay, so here's, there's a couple.
Can we put introductions in there?
We have one more. Is there any way to engage the crowd?
Okay. So my to-do item was to come up with a definition of zero waste, and then after listening to the presentation on the fourth, I also pulled in some of what Mr. Chandler included in his research that the city did. What, he mentioned the Zero Waste International Alliance, and this, they adopted an internationally accepted definition of zero waste, and Mr. Chandler pointed, quoted part of it in his document, but not the whole thing. It's a goal that's ethical, economical, efficient, visionary, to guide people in changing lifestyles and practices, to emulate sustainable natural cycles where all discarded materials are designed to become resources for others to use. Zero waste means designing and managing products and processes to systematically avoid and eliminate the volume and toxicity of waste and materials, conserve and recover all resources, and not burn or bury them. Implementing zero waste will eliminate all discharges to land, air, or water that are a threat to planet, human, animal, or plant health. And then, and that fits in with our mission statement as a committee. Our committee mission statement is to increase awareness and actions that foster a more sustainable living agenda for residents and visitors to thrive economically, socially, and environmentally in Lincoln City. That's our mission as a committee, and this kind of fits right in there.
Sure does.
So I did go on and do some additional research. EcoCycle has some really great resources. They talk about, they have a page, a webpage, it's worth going to the links in here, what it is and what it is not. They talk about some goals for implementing. And then if you look on down to, there's another, there's another group, Planet Aid, that uses this definition, where they're focusing zero waste strictly on trash output. And this means no plastic, no wrappers, no garbage. This may seem unrealistic, but it's, people are showing that it can be done, and it's what is the zero waste movement. And I'm sorry, I skipped over reading the EcoCycle's definition, and this was one that I, zero waste redesigns our systems and resource use from product design to disposal to prevent resource consumption, conserve energy, mitigate climate change, reduce water usage, prevent toxins, and stop ecosystem destruction. And they talk a lot about the whole cycle of life, that if you are taking something that is fossil fuel-based, for instance, and using it, then that's the end of its life, there's no cycle. So you use it, throw it away, I mean. Then the last thing was that Ron Chandler mentioned Fort Collins' definition, and again, this is another place where if we were to actually tackle zero waste as a thing, they have, their focus is also reducing what goes to the landfill, or just what's get wasted and not reused, I should say, not just landfill. And they have an awful lot of implementation strategies, plans, their initial implementation goal was a 50% reduction in material that went to the landfill. And so that was something that's measurable, it's specific, it's measurable, and that was one of the things they talked about in the meeting, they wanted specific measurable things. And actually, Fort Collins accomplished that, they got to 51% by the target year that they have. They've been doing this for 10 years, so.
On their site, that's already, does it say what their, like, any of their plans were, like, how they got from?
Yes.
Oh, does it?
Yes. And they talk about, they have, like, their implementation strategy, they had, one month they had a community meeting with these stakeholders, and then the next month, they had a community meeting with these stakeholders, and that kind of thing. And so it gives a lot of information and tools. That, the Fort Collins site and the EcoCycle site were, had a lot of tools, I felt like. And then the last thing that he mentioned was the Conference of Mayors, who adopted a definition of zero waste. But their definition, as he mentioned in his testimony, is not actually a definite definition. It's just principles. Extend producer responsibility, reduce waste, repair, reuse, donate, recycle, you know what I mean? So it just is, it's not really a definition. And then this is kind of like, what's the idea, what do you want to get to? You want to get to, this is, this is like best, best use to worst use, so you want to get down to where you have almost nothing in this, down here, so. And then, the other thing that I handed out is, I was, I just was struggling with the whole concept of what is zero waste, and I'm sorry, this, this is the same picture on both sides. I did a slide, and then I started writing notes, so this is like off the top of my head here. Zero waste applies to air emissions, fossil fuels, and forests, applies to litter, ocean Have another thing that is usually generally the primary focus, and that's solid waste in landfills, and then chemical pollutants, herbicide and pesticide use. So things that damage the planet, things that are, you use them and you can't undo what you did, kind of a thing. Zero waste is not, is not just about reducing our trash output, it's about ending the one-way stream of use. So on the one side, I have fly, and just talks about why air emissions and fossil fuels are included, and litter, chemical pollutants, and solid waste. And here, only about 8% of our solid waste is in the landfills, this is what I was talking about, and yet they're filling at an alarming rate. Landfills are permanent, they do not biodegrade. Filling a landfill is a one-way transaction, which violates the whole principle of zero waste, so. And then the what, I just had some ideas on the other side of things that we could look at. Air emissions and fossil fuels, for instance, reducing the consumption of fossil fuels, get those city EV cars. By the way, I have a real dilemma. Do I get the Mustang, or do I get the electric or crossover?
Tough decision.
I am, I've been waiting for a pickup truck, anyway. So if they can do a semi, they can do a pickup. So, reducing carbon emissions through carbon oxides and other programs, reducing the use of paper, like you were talking about, and if there is necessary paper, reduce it with the use of 100% recycled paper. And that's something we've done at Autobahn, and it was really interesting to go to the printer and request our publications to be done on 100% recycled, and they said, well, there isn't any such thing, but we do have 10%. Okay, I've been using 100% recycled for 10 years. Anyway.
Just as part of an education.
Yes, it is, absolutely. And then litter and ocean pollution, we talked about already. Incentivizing businesses to replace any used items, that all falls in with what Dave you were talking about. And then one of the things that was early on, actually, in the city plan, was to influence the city to reduce the use of herbicides and pesticides on their property, and they talked about, that was part of the, some of the original charter, not, I don't know what
Agenda.
Yeah, the original plan, yes. And then solid waste in landfills encourage the plan for curbside composting, and so I'm just saying that we should support the effort that, I mean, it's, it looks like it's moving forward, but we should, we should support that, because that's a huge deal. And then promoting alternative reuse and recycling options, that's just a neighborhood exchange for packaging and real materials. Anyway, so that's what zero waste is, and if you look at it in its totality, it's a lot of things, but the, I mean, there's a couple of things that you could do, is we could have like a position statement about it, and then say, okay, within that context, this is what we propose the city to take on. And so that we don't, so it doesn't have the appearance of, you know, we're just taking one thing out of context. We're saying, we understand that there's this whole definition, which we agree with, and we want to move in this area as a specific thing Lincoln City can tackle, you know, in X amount of time or something. So, and that would have a context for you. Anyway, so that's, that's an idea.
I have a question. Where is the city with its use of herbicides and pesticides? Where are we right now?
What we were going to talk about.
I don't know.
My understanding, I've asked that question too, we don't use them in the city. We don't use them at all.
Okay. Because it was, it was mentioned Because it was, it was mentioned several years ago that that was one of the things that they were looking at doing, and they were going to reduce first and then.
Okay, that's what I asked. Against him. I asked Lyle flat out, I said, do we use herbicides?
No.
Okay.
They do, they do, but we don't here.
Because I see a guy going down.
Yeah, county does, we don't.
Oh, the county does.
You can't stop them from doing that.
And 101 would be ODOP.
Yes, and ODOP does, for sure.
And are they using glyphosate-based pesticides?
I just think they would.
So this, and to me, that's part, because there are countries that are outlawing glyphosate. Glyphosate is so dangerous. And it, and the example I wanted to give, which is why I brought it up, was when I was living in Portland, having moved up from Alchance where you can swim everywhere, and I jumped in the Tualatin River, and that water is so polluted that my skin was on fire. And it was all pesticides coming off the golf courses. And if it's doing that to the people, it's doing it to the animals and the plants and everything else, and it's absolutely unacceptable. And there's no excuse for it. I have zero tolerance for these things because it absolutely is unnecessary. So I would really, to me, the second to the plastic thing, the herbicide and pesticide thing is way up on the list. So maybe, I don't know if anybody is as fired up about it as I am.
Well, the county, the county voters passed an aerial spray ban that has now been, still, still in contention in the courts, right?
Right.
We've lost round one. But, so there's genuine interest. And, and I know that, well, the Green Drinks organization used to have, I had mine for years, it was a little waterproof piece of paper that said herbicide-free zone, and we just tacked it on the front of our property because we had like five acres and we didn't spray anything, ever. And, but the neighbors did. And so we wanted to advertise, A, not on my property, and B, you know, there are alternatives. And I don't know where that stands, but that was a really cool way. It wasn't like shaming anyone into it, but it was kind of fun to drive around and see all the signs.
Yeah, nice. Well, it certainly is part of it. And, and even with the stores, I've gone into Ace and different harvest stores repeatedly and said, why are you still selling this stuff when it has been proven as a carcinogen, it's toxic? Why are you promoting the use of these things as part of what you sell? And they don't really have a good, you know, corporate's making us, well, excuse me. So I don't know, yes.
You, you also have something here, encourage the plan for curbside composting. And I think if that's of interest of yours, you need to convey that to the city council because that's a topic under discussion right now.
And that's, that's actually specifically what I meant, is encourage that plan that it's right now being talked, we're just saying that that's, that's something we.
So, your idea of maybe the signage about no herbicides, pesticides, is that something that we might want to recommend to the city? That the city have the same kind of signage on its little lawns and everything?
Well, and that's what I was going to, that's right along with the thought that I was having as you were all speaking. We're getting close to having, after all these discussions, I feel like we're getting close to having little bits of a plan gelled together. And so, we need to kind of narrow that down on what our plan is. And then all of these ideas would be strategies for implementing the plan, and, which would also involve reaching out to stakeholders. For instance, the herbicide pesticide. So there's, if that's one facet that we wanted to focus on, talking with stores that sell that. And is there anything that we could do to have them not sell that? Having a campaign for getting the signs made and having them available somewhere at the city that.
The lawn care people.
That folks could, yeah, the lawn care people.
Yard care is a big deal here because we have so many.
So those are all ideas that would be part of our, part of our implementation strategy.
And, and after the meeting last time, Anne Marie and I chatted a little bit, and I offered to put together, because I've been thinking about it for a long time, a booklet on the local edibles and medicinals that grow in people's gardens and, and people spray them because they think they're horrible. And they're actually something you can eat or something you can make tea out of and get rid of the flu. And to, of that as part of the educational process of what we're talking about. So I'm currently working on that.
I told her it was a great idea. I was excited to read it. So she gets it put together.
We're taking comments from the peanut gallery. I saw a hand up here.
Just going back to the ways of implementing, implementing it to the, I don't know, just the community and residential areas. In terms of the waste management in the city, it could be part of that program to where either it's set up with tumblers or basic things, not necessarily tumblers because those things are made out of plastic, but certain bins that are taken to facilities that are either reused to grow food for the community and other things like that, where that excess can be repurposed for good in the community too. Whether replanning trees, using that composted soil or anything like that, I think it'd be really great to, you know, have that in it as a first step of teaching people, hey, this is how you're going to be, you know, using or recycling this, and it's going into that tree that's right there. And once people have that gratification, I feel like it could maybe help a lot.
And that's definitely, one of the components of the plan is the education portion.
I just wanted to say, sort of, you know, segue to something else that's going on in the city, something that you're talking about with edible plants, that that might be something, when you firm up your plan, and when you have your list, that you might want to be with our emergency preparedness coordinator.
Oh, the cert people.
Well, no, we have an emergency preparedness coordinator, who works for the cities, and he is, we couldn't have gotten a better person when our other one retired. We were very, very lucky. But, well, I've been talking about emergency preparedness, the idea of, well, what do you eat when everything's gone? So I'm just saying that there are, segue to what you're saying, to efforts already out, perfect, but anyway.
No, and that's great. And I actually have written a book on emergency and trauma recovery, but that has all been true.
That's a start.
The only tough thing that I, that came up in my head is, it's already hard getting people to know what to recycle and what not to recycle. So getting them to compost to what items really are compostable, what items are really going to break down, and that, you know, bar just the plastic bottles into that bin.
Exactly, exactly. The, the need for public education is going to be profound.
And that management, you know, facility, waste management, just to be.
Going through.
Strict guidelines and going through all that, you know, the bags, stuff for that.
And I think it also goes back to part of the overall plan is when you, as we involve the different stakeholders, many of whom would be the grocery stores and, and restaurants, and having something that, people don't need to worry about whether or not it's compostable or recyclable or trash, that it just breaks down. And going back to that reduce, so rather than having a plastic bag at Safeway for your produce, you have the hemp or the mesh. There's, there's lots of different kinds. And again, that goes back to identifying our, if, if that's going to be our first focus, identifying our stakeholders and what are the steps to, to getting to that reduction in waste in that particular arena that we've identified as our first area of focus, if that is our first area.
I think you can make an argument, I mean, I totally get the start with one thing and get moving. But I think if we can just agree that, you know, we're moving at our pace, and so regardless of what it looks like from the outside, I, I think even if it took an extra meeting to get there, if we said, hey, here's three things. Because I really think that the freshwater and the protection of Devil's Lake and not to mention the area rivers, we're in a cascade head biosphere for primary sake, and we should be watching out for, so I, I think that, that there's, there is something to presenting, you know, here are three things for you to consider. Which of these would you like us to prioritize? That kind of thing would give the council, council a more sense of ownership. And while we're sort of going back and forth, I wanted to circle back to the, the idea about the, where I mentioned, we don't have to have a ban to make this work. But just from a practical standpoint, to go door-to-door and talk to restaurants and say, hey, we'd like you to switch from what you're doing now to these compostable items, and we're going to offset it with this complex system where I need you to save some invoices. And it's not that complex, it's not that heavily a burden, but it is totally doable, but that's a lot of legwork. I wonder if the committee would be interested in, I mean, where are you in terms of thinking, should we recommend to the, if we recommended this to the city council, should it accompany a ban of these certain items? That we could then work with Bree, who's helped craft other civic bans of other things, so that she knows how to word it? Because I know that Ron gave some really interesting testimony on November 4th of city manager Chandler, where he was pointing out, yes, confusing, you want to have, you want to have the right, you want to do this properly. And there are models galore out there. Fort Collins is one, I used to live in Fort Collins. And so there are models galore about this. And so I, I think that with the committee, anyone want to volunteer, I mean, are you interested in the ban idea or not interested?
I am.
One thing we were talking about in LC Green Drinks was that sometimes people turn into jerks when the B word is mentioned, you know? People don't like bans, don't like being told what to do. And sometimes it, it creates, like in Newport, when the fifth graders were doing the plastic bag ban, all these, you know, or a small loud segment of the population was against it. And, you know, Bree was talking about during my editorial prayer day, yeah, they have till Tuesday to get, you know, to get all these signatures, and of course they did, they weren't even halfway there, you know? So they were whining and complaining, but didn't actually take any action. But I think there is the, especially on platforms where people like to throw in comments like on Facebook, whatever, people like to freak out about the ban of things. And, oh, oh, here we go, nanny state, da-da-da. You know, I actually read, I had to stop myself, but the Oregonians' reports about the statewide plastic bag ban, you know, I.
Do not read those.
I know, I know. I put down the comments because I'm like, I have a feeling I know what I'm going to see. And there was a lot of positivity, but then, you know, there was a lot of that crap too. And I, I don't think that should stop us from banning things like this, but I think, I think maybe starting a program where it's all on a positive change, kind of note before a ban might be good, just to see how it goes. That, that's kind of my take, just because I feel like it might be more enticing, kind of.
Yeah.
I understand it's a lot of legwork, but I agree with you, that if there's, if there is a way to make it an incentive program as opposed to a ban, and try it, have it piloted, the old pilot word, whatever. Some of the things that I have, we've, we've noticed in, at Audubon, we're going to put together a little, kind of like Surf Rider does with straws, restaurants here in town are starting to do this on their own, and some of the hotels too. And so, we're going to put together a little thank you card that you leave at businesses for, and I always write on the receipt, thank you for no styrofoam, thank you for no straw, thank you for, anyway. But that, that comes under what you were talking about, is partnering with other groups and things here in town. So, I don't know, I, I would prefer trying a.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with both of them, and I just, I know I've been doing environmental work for 45 years, and some of the things that we're talking about, we were talking about 45 years ago, and haven't made a whole lot of, so that's when you hear me going, just get over it, you know? Get down. So once in a while I'll get that way because I've seen people coming up with a lot of reasons not to do these things for a long time. But it doesn't mean, I think people are, have a lot more incentive now than they used to, and I'm happy to move forward and do that if it's not going to be logistically too complicated.
No, that's great. I think what we need to find is a class of fifth graders to help us go door-to-door.
Counselor.
I think that's very important. I think, I think what we need to do, we're all getting on a little bit, but the youth of today is where it's at. I'm not going to be around when this disappears, as it's going to at the moment. But these young people, they're the ones who, I haven't got it embedded into them yet, you know, we can change them. They're still right, you know, people who are my age try and talk to them, well, we won't have it through that, it's way from me, you know, because I'm already doing. But I talk to the youth constantly, and you know, we have matches, we have, you know, the match in Portland for the, for the climate and everything. We had it in Vancouver, you know, and talking to those youth, that's, it's incredible that they really want to change, you know? So I think, listening to all this, if we get to the youth, you know, if we can go to the schools, get, get them involved, and you know, it's so important, you know, because as I say, the comments that you're talking about, I haven't read them, but I'm sure they're from all the people who are, you know, whatever. And then that's what you were saying just early on, how you want to make Lincoln City different, unique, as you might say. You know, how about talking about the fish in the ocean? You know, they're being destroyed, you know, bringing that up, kind of, you know, putting the doubt there. We're going to change the world, we're going to be the change of the, of the, we're going to change the ocean, we're going to change everything, you know, because it's so important, you know? And everything you were saying was very good. Thank you very much.
I am. I did, I'm sorry, I'm going to have something to do. I have one thing I'm not sure, and the other one I am sure. We, we did have, about two and a half years ago, some fifth graders, some young fifth graders, they came to city council. They did a fabulous job of asking us to ban the plastic bags. And they were adorable, and they were great, and they had all their backs down. And the problem is, what I think we weren't able to pass that, because I think some of us were willing to, was because we didn't have you yet. And it would have been just pulling something out of thin air. If you came to us and asked the same question after going through the plan that Anne Marie's talking about, and identifying some things, I don't know that you, you know, I don't know everybody's way of thinking, but I don't know that there'd be a lot of resistance to abandon this and abandon that, because we've been talking about it amongst ourselves and together for quite a while, but we didn't have to. We didn't have anything to say, well, our sustainability committee came to us with these ideas, and these are why they think that we should support that. Because that gives us something for not pulling out of thin air, but actually something to base our decisions on for the city, because it's a big, big choice to make for us. However, this is part I wasn't sure, I haven't received any comments from anybody about not doing a ban on anything. I just want to say that out loud because I haven't, others may have, but, and I don't know that many business owners, so, I mean, I might not just be the person that they would go to.
And I'll just end that and say that in Newport, I spoke to city council members when they had the ban going on. They said they wouldn't do that again because you had a public hearing, people terrified, committees were torn apart between the two sides. It took up a lot of time with the council because they had other things to do, like housing and amendments and ordinances. So it did take a lot of staff time, there were hard feelings about the ban. So if you consider a ban, you want to do some legwork, I liked your idea about voluntarily doing it as a pilot project, because it does create hard feelings in communities.
Well, and I, I think if we approached it in a way that's like, all really lighthearted and tourism, you know, marketing-driven, where it's kind of like, here's the pros and cons. Pros are all these things, and the city will even help you pay for it, you know, if you do, just try it out, these ones are free, whatever. Here's the con, nothing, you know?
Exactly.
So, just trying to figure out what the con was, like, yeah.
And therein lies the rub, because the trick to this, to get the 75% or whatever the figure is we set as the target, of the target business categories, lodging, dining, bars, drive-thru coffee, whatever, onboard with this, we have to be able to tell them exactly that. Explorer, Lincoln City's got your back, we're going to, we're going to offset, you know, all you need to do is, here's a one-page memo that just simply tells you what to do, where to send your bill, and then we'll offset this 90 days later. But the city has to totally approve it before we get to that point. So they have to approve in advance before they know that we can win the support of the hearts and minds of the business owners. And so that's a leap of faith right there. And so, the city also has to appreciate that we can't have all the answers before we go to the business community. We can't go to the business community until we know that we've got the city's support. Otherwise, it's. community until we know that we've got the city's support. Otherwise, it's, we think we'll come back to you in six months and tell you that the city's behind this, but they won't take that meeting.
I wonder if we could do a survey that's kind of pounding the pavement that's like, hey, would you be willing as a business to do this? It would be this and this, like it would be, you know, just what you just said, but like polling or surveying businesses first to see how resistant they would be. I think a lot of them are changing their minds already. I, next door to our business, I was kind of like, yeah, I'll promote people to go over and get food from you if you stop using styrofoam. And I was kind of a jerk about it, but you know, it's like, I think of-
Good for you.
They've changed.
Yeah, they, they have no more styrofoam.
There you go, Sarah. Now we can all go have fish and chips.
That reminds me that the director of the Chamber of Commerce is really interested in these ideas. And she, I believe, I sincerely believe she's really be an ally for us.
And one of the things I wanted to throw into the pot here about this, because there was some issues in, on the state level, bringing our own dishes and things into the restaurants. I do that all the time. I have pirate stuff. I go in to order food to go or I take it with me and I, they just put it in that. But there was some lawsuit or something.
Yeah, there's, there's been some lawsuits.
So what is the work around there? How do we, what is the-
And that would be something that we would want to add in, I mean, if this is, and it sounds like this is-
I would say individually, doing it until they tell you don't. Until the restaurant decides, oh, our policy is we can't do it.
I did a, a little bit of research on that because it was brought up. And there are cities who are adopting as part of their sanitation code or whatever, allowing reusable containers to be brought in as long as the container doesn't go over into the food preparation area and that there's no liability to the business. And I don't, I don't know how they're able to do that, but apparently it's, in some cities are putting it in their codes so that, and contrary to what was said at the meeting on November 4th, there are several businesses who are in the business of providing those kind of containers quite successfully. So they have not all gone out of business.
Starbucks, granted it's beverages, it's not food, but since I take my container-
And all of us have ours.
And they-
And the liability thing, it's basically if you take your own container and you do it at your own risk, you're taking, and you cannot come back and say, oh.
I got botulism.
All the stuff that's already in the grower, yeast anyway.
I believe though that that is what happens. That is the case.
Yeah.
And then they sued the restaurants saying that it was, the food was contaminated, not basing it on the container.
And I'm just, and I'm just saying that there are some ways to mitigate that.
Probably have a solid completely. We're running out of time.
We are, okay.
Sorry, something just popped into my head regarding to this. And I think if businesses were able to notify or be able to write off, hey, this person brought a container and brought this, then it's, the liability isn't necessarily put directly onto them. It's more put onto the customer because it's in the system. It shows that this person brought their own container, took their own risk buying this food, and therefore it's still at least in the, it's, there's records of this.
And maybe that's how Starbucks does it. Because when you bring in your own, you get a discount, like a 10 cent.
There's gotta be some record.
So it shows that you're, there's your documentation.
That's really good.
That's a good point.
So Anne Marie, bring us home.
I think it is done by the county to help, the county does most of the helping functions for restaurants. So that would be somebody you could approach if you wanted to amend that sanitation.
Okay. And, okay, in California, just passed it as like okay to do. So that's where the Surf Rider actually helped with that as far as like-
So we have lots of-
Not lots, but yeah, we have lots of ideas and sources that we can go to to get this research. So I just want to ask, because we have two of our counselors here, based upon the conversations that we've had thus far today, and it sounds like we're getting close to putting some ideas together, is that in line with the council directives, in your opinion, that were given at the November 4th? Okay, perfect. So what we will do then is we will continue this discussion on our zero waste, reducing single plastic containers of water, herb pesticides, and kind of make those our three focus items. And then we can, we'll just start putting together what we think are stakeholders and implementation strategies and education and strategies. And it'll take a lot of time, probably.
We both have one more thing to share, so.
Search first. Oh, okay. Well, I, I didn't get my little review.
I know, sorry.
That's okay. Because I, the last few weeks I've been really busy anyways. We did have the LC Green Drinks and Surf Rider at, you know, involved my business, whatever. And both of those things were really good conversation areas too. Anyway. But with the, oh crap, I lost my train of thought. Oh, I was starting to look into cost differences between styrofoam containers and other kind of containers.
Nice.
I think we're gonna start looking more into that later. And today I was trying to cram, but some things are compostable only in industrial areas. And that's where they're, they're talking about, it's a city council meeting too. I think maybe it's safer to stay away from those and just go with paper if we do this big campaign. Also, there are lids and straws and utensils all made from corn, potatoes, whatever. And those things we could encourage and maybe help supplement with businesses too. Because it's not just the containers, but it's a lot of plastic and straws and stuff too. And I felt like there was something else, but I kind of lost it.
And I know Mitch, who did tons of work on sustainable eating.
Yeah, I can just tell you briefly, I talked to Ed at Explore Lincoln City about it. And he says that it, this idea couldn't dovetail any more closely with what, something they already want to do anyway. And he wants to set up a meeting between me and, I forget her name, but she runs the culinary center.
Donna.
Donna, then. The concept, the concept that, of course, they're creative people. They're gonna want to come up with their own concept. But my idea was flavors 101. So celebrating a week, a week of different flavors on Highway 101 using the city's octopus motif.
And all local.
And so, and the, and so the idea is that we're gonna, we would present, the restaurant owners would present their customers with food that was at the intersection of four areas, sustainable, easy for them to replicate. They'll get their, they'll get the recipe, easy for them to replicate at home, healthy and local.
That's very nice.
That's very nice.
So how about if we make that, we'll do a, yeah, that'll be three.
Plastic water.
And the plastic water and the food. Those are our three.
Those are our three. On the plastic, no, something else came out, the doggy poop bags. They actually make those in corn things. And so the city, to get the city to convert over to-
Onto our-
Organized whole doggy poop bags.
Okay. So we need to add that to our list, to our plan.
Because they get left.
This is great, you guys.
And I would like to offer to have the herb edible thing ready for the next meeting. And I'm doing this to light a fire under my beauty to get it done. If you would like for me to do that and have that available to talk about.
Sure, yeah, I think it'd be great.
I'm not going to be here next month for the meeting. And I guess I just want to, I want to encourage us to whatever plan we put forward to the city council that we include, it doesn't have to be this, but we include it. These ideas all fall under zero waste. So have it, have it in a context. And this is, we plan to be here for a long time with you. And, and this is Plan A, B, C, all, you know what I mean? So have it be in a context. So you have the background, you have, this is, you know, we accept this definition, whatever it is. And then-
Absolutely.
Yeah. And so kind of tie it together.
Yeah.
So did you say you did single-use plastic work that we didn't hear today? Because we could put it at the top of the agenda next time.
Yeah, just really surface stuff. It was kind of just some little factoids that I found. And I was trying to compare prices, but there's a whole big world of, you know, the alternatives and which ones are better, which ones are worse. But some of them are borderline, just like greenwashing, you know? It's corn, it's made from corn, but you know, it'll sit around and get lodged in a bird or a fish as easily as plastic would. So I was kind of trying to cram, whatever. But so I-
We want another Murph.
Yeah.
To come back with even more ideas on how our-
Free topic. And I would encourage you guys to come to LC Green Drinks. Not just because it's at my business or whatever, but no one has to drink or anything. They don't need 21 to come in there. But there's a lot of great ideas brainstormed at the meeting in November. They are usually the last Sunday of every month at 5:00 PM. And yeah, there's a lot of really good ideas there too. And one thing I was gonna mention, just if you guys have extra time to read, whatever, it doesn't really have to do with environmental stuff, but the book Contagious talks about why things catch on. And I was reading about it for marketing and stuff. But it applies to so many things, just trends and, but also kind of like how to get something kind of looked at in a trendy, cool way or whatever. And I think approaching this whole campaign in a way that's like, hey, we're doing something really cool and like, here's how, like, here's why it will catch on, you know? Like, it's a whole book just kind of about-
I think that's great. I think it's great.
Yeah.
Great. So excellent. Then I guess we're adjourned.
Great.
Thank you, everybody. Good meeting.
Can you name the names of the young people who spoke up?
I know them.
You know them?
Yeah.
Could check the name for my class.
If Ed decides he wants- I just have this crowd in here.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know, I didn't know.
No, I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Actually, I do need, um, so if I can just leave it in the crowd, I have Nick.
Catherine, you're the other, the gentleman over here.
Pollard Mill, Pollard Mill, L-I-N, N-E-L.
You're looking for a bitch too.
Yeah.
We can, I don't want to bring that. Yeah. So I can tell you how many times I've stopped people fishing, you know, because the marine reserve started about the middle of the Pacific Ocean, right? They extend all the way to the Caspian Head. Yeah, we're getting out of here. It's not very well timed. It's active stage, I mean, city's just possible. Oh, sure. Yes. No worries. No worries. I think Anne Marie tried to market to get a big college guy's thanks on the morning show for her. So she left early.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we talked about that.
I know, like, we could pick it.
Yeah, a while ago, yeah. But I think the, the problem is that the committee's five now. They have her notes at seven.
Yeah, well, we, Darren's situation is going with them because sometimes somebody could be out of, you know, we don't have a corner.
And then you have more people tell.
Yeah, I think it's-
Yeah, if you want to come back and see if everybody's free, otherwise we can, you can drop by another side. But I'm happy to introduce you.
I mean, just like after.
If you hang on for a minute.
But soon as you start.
Yeah, if you don't mind hanging on for a minute, we can walk back there and see if she's available.
Yeah, I know.
Otherwise, otherwise maybe.